Paul, the March ninth meeting of the Ventnor City Planning Board two thousand and two twenty-two to session. This meeting is being held in accordance with due public notice thereof at pursuit of the New Jersey State Sunshine Law. Notice this meeting was advertised in the press and the current and a copy of same has been posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building. At this time, we're going to rise and salute the flag.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance of the United States of America. And to the republic. Which stands one nation under God. Indivisible.
Liberty and justice. Will the board administrator please call the roll?
Tom Halpin.
Tom.
You're muted.
Let's see. All right, Tom, will you just move on?
Okay, Commissioner Langcliffe.
Here.
Jay Cook.
Here.
Romans Abby Hutch.
Here.
Lorraine Salata.
Here.
Dan Smith, the third.
Here.
Mike Weizen.
Here.
Peter Taco.
Here.
Wendy Bartlett.
Here.
Don Sigling. Don.
Don.
Looks frozen.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
We'll move, we'll move on. Don?
Yep, I froze. Sorry, I'm here.
Okay.
Okay.
Sorry, froze for a second.
Absent our Commissioner Kribel, Tim Coob and Greer Gaskell.
Okay. Just to the board as a special request, there's been some members of the board that have requested that we do a moment of silence for the world hostilities that are occurring in Ukraine. So at this time, if we just have a moment of silence for peace and goodwill for mankind. So we'll do that at this time. When you're prepared to resume, we shall resume.
Thank you, Chair.
You are. Mike, thank you very much for that. And at this time, we go on to the minutes, the adoption of minutes of the last meeting. Have anybody, has anybody have any comments, corrections or alter amendments?
I do.
Okay, please.
On the bottom of the page, it says Mr. Cook informs. I think it should be connected. Just a, just a typo.
Okay.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, with that, may I have a motion for, for adoption, please, and a second?
I will make the motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
I.
Those opposed? Eyes have it, the minutes are hereby adopted. For the record, there are no resolutions for adoption this, on this application at this time. So we'll move right on. Yes.
It's Leo, just real quick.
Yes.
Maria asked me.
I'm sorry, Leo, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I put it on the twenty-eighth because I just figured we would adopt everything together. Is that okay? If not, I can.
No, leave it on the twentieth. Jay, the, Maria just wanted a short resolution confirming Carmella's stipend increase that we approved last month. But that'll be on the twentieth agenda.
Okay, as one of us could prepare, and I've signed it already. That's, I haven't signed it yet. I've seen it, but I haven't signed it yet.
Okay, we'll, we'll deal with it then.
It'll be, it's a, we'll adopt at that time.
Okay, perfect.
Fine, thank you, Leo. Now, Leo, there's been some cancellations for this particular meeting. Do you want to handle those at this time?
It's my understanding that seven oh two North Cambridge is ready to go tonight, eight North Cambridge is ready to go, and one oh four South Washington is ready to go. However, the fourth application on the agenda, Christos in Virginia, Kalavos, their attorney, Mr. Baronowski's requesting an adjournment to our next meeting, which will be March twenty-eighth at six thirty P M. Are we still on Zoom? Are we back live? Did we make a decision on that yet?
I believe it was in person.
In person?
Mm-hmm.
Emails have gone out that everything is in person. Lance, is that correct?
My understanding, yes.
Okay, that, that, that was my understanding also. So if anyone's here for, for one oh three South Newport Avenue, Kalavos Application Block twenty-seven Lot six point oh two, that's going to be heard on March twenty-eighth, six thirty P M. It will be in person at City Hall on the second floor in the courtroom. The applicant will not be required to republish or re-notice.
Okay. Any other further announcements that you have? Are you clear? Are you complete, Leo?
I am, thank you.
Okay, at this time, we have the application of Richard and Rachel DeCiccio. Is that correct? At seven twenty North Cambridge Avenue.
Chico, right?
DeChio, how are you?
DeChio, okay, yes. You are representing yourselves?
Yes, we are, yeah.
Okay, fine. At this time, if you could please be sworn, our solicitor will swear you in. Or both of you.
Yes.
Okay, Rich.
If, if, if you're, if it's just going to be you speaking, you can raise your right hand if your wife's going to speak also, just you can each raise your right hand and state your name. There we go. All right, just state your name and address for the record, please.
Richard and Rachel DeChio, seven oh two North Cambridge.
And do you swear from the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Nothing but the truth.
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you.
All right, what we're going to do, Rich, is we're going to have our, our, our planner and engineer give a preamble first of the application, and then you will continue, then you will present your, your application.
Very good.
Okay. Could you be sworn, Roger?
Yeah, Mr. McLaren, please raise your right hand. Do you swear from the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Roger, could you proceed with the preamble you do on this particular application?
Sure, I'll keep it brief. I mean, the application is pretty brief, but the report is originally dated February fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. The application, Richard and Rachel, the, the Chicho, pardon me if I didn't pronounce that correctly, seven zero two North Cambridge Avenue, Block three forty-nine, Lot sixteen, located within the R two single-family zoning district. This is a substantial benefit variance. A material is reviewed on the bottom of page one. Page two is the project description. The applicant seeks, seeks variance relief from the city of Ventnor. Or a secret variances to construct a new front yard deck, which encroaches more into the setback than permitted. The property is situated on a corner and has two front yards by definition in the city's ordinance. By appearance, it seems to be used more as a side yard than a front yard, however, the ordinance still considers this a front yard. There are one variance, there is one variance identified, possibly two. The one identified is a front yard setback to the porch on Wellington Avenue, where fifteen feet is required minimum setback for, for forest floor porches, which is a five-foot encroachment and three point, three point five feet is proposed. Lot coverage is sixty-five percent to be required, and it's unknown what is proposed, but it appears to me with my discussion with the applicant a few weeks ago that the lot coverage does meet the required lot coverage. So I just had some general comments on page three with recommendations on page four that everyone can see. Again, it's you have a front yard, first floor porch extending further out into the front yard setback than permitted, so they are seeking relief. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please go ahead. Rich, have you read Mr. McLaren's report?
Yes, we have.
And are you in agreement with it?
We went over the report and did, has everyone received the plot plan? We dropped one off the other day, and we just wanted to make sure that everybody received the plot plan. We added that to the package. We did look at the lot coverage and our existing lot coverage right now, not including the deck, is we're at twenty-three percent. Our proposed lot coverage after the deck will leave us with twenty-eight percent structured to lot coverage. So we're well underneath that sixty-five percent threshold. So we took care of that.
Okay.
I have that plot plan.
You do not have that plot plan?
I do not.
We dropped off nineteen copies to Carmella this.
Put them in the packets. So I thought you sent it in the email to Roger and I. No?
I did not send it to Roger now.
Okay. I'll send it to you now, Roger.
Are they in the packet?
They were in the packets, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Does the new plot plan show the deck being added?
Yes, it does.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have that.
It is on the.
They definitely went in the packets.
It's, it's only, it's on the survey from Ponzius.
There it is, I got it. Sorry.
On the Wellington side.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. If you can continue with your application.
Um, so what we have.
In the middle of a planning board meeting, I'm on the planning board in Ventnor City, so.
All right, please continue.
Okay, so what we have come to figure out, and we've done a little bit of research, our our curb, well, so our, where are we at here? Okay, so from, from the curb to our property line is seventeen feet. Eighty-five to ninety percent of the properties in Ventnor are in ten to twelve foot offset from curb to property line. So we're already seven feet roughly past what everybody else is. And that's where we come into our issue is, okay, well, now we're seventeen feet back from the curb, then you add your ten-foot setback from that, and that's why we're requesting seven feet to be able to put this deck on the side of the house.
I don't follow you. So do I speak in terms of how far is your house, how far is your house from the property line?
Our house from the property line is fifteen and a half feet.
Fifteen and a half feet, okay. Okay.
From the curb to our property line.
Curtain doesn't matter. We're working from the property line.
Okay, so from the, from the house to the property line is fifteen and a half feet.
Right, okay. How big is your deck?
The deck, we're requesting for a twelve-foot deck.
A twelve-foot deck.
Yes, twelve by two, yes.
Right. And then how many feet are required? How many feet are allowed by zoning for the deck?
Five feet.
Five feet, so you, you need a ten-foot setback.
Uh, yes.
Yes, so.
Yes.
Yes, okay. So you can continue from here.
We're requesting seven feet to be added to our setback so that we can, you know, be able to, number one, fit this deck to where we, you know, it's within reason. And the other thing is from curb back is seventeen feet. Most properties is ten feet, so that's where we're kind of coming up with the six and a half and the seven, we're really seven feet is what we're asking for.
So Roger, can, can you clarify this? Because I understand what, what, what the applicant is talking about. But saying that he's asking for seven feet and all this stuff, he's asking for a variance to put the deck three point five feet away from the property line, is that correct?
Yes, you're, you're, you're allowed a five-foot encroachment. He's asking for a twelve and a half foot encroachment.
Right. So what I would, let's focus on the setback instead of the encroachment, because that's what the relief you're going to be getting, so.
Right.
I, I understand the argument with regard to the, from the curb line back to the building, because Wellington Avenue is an eighty-foot right of way. It's an odd right of way. It's bigger than most in the city.
Yes.
And there is a significant distance between the curb and the property line. What I would say is that would, should be couched as your reasons for requesting it, not what everybody else has, you know, there's I'm, I'm trying not to put testimony in the applicant's mouth. How about if I just be quiet for a little while?
Now, the way you said it, yes, that's, that's exactly why we're requesting this, because of the excessive offset from the curb to our property line, seventeen feet.
Wait a minute. Okay, the house is twenty-three feet from this, from the curb, from the sidewalk.
The house is.
Thirty-two and a half feet.
Fifteen plus from the, from the house to the sidewalk, you want to know?
Yeah, well, no, I just tell you the house on the sidewalks, twenty-three feet.
Yes.
In there, and the sidewalk is the distance from the property lot. It's not on the property, the sidewalk is not on the property lot.
No, it is not. No, it's roughly four feet back from the property.
How many properties on, on on the distance between Wellington Avenue and Harvard Avenue have a deck like you're requesting?
There's only one house in between our house and Harvard Avenue, which is Bill Tildsley's house, and he's about two feet closer to the sidewalk than we are. So he's about twenty feet from his sidewalk, and we're twenty-three.
I, I didn't ask his house, I asked about a deck.
Oh, there's no deck on his house, no.
Right, and his, and his house conforms.
Yes.
Yes, I asked, okay, from, like, I'll restate my question, from Dorset Avenue to Wellington Avenue, I mean, to Harvard Avenue, along Wellington Avenue, on both sides of the street, how many houses have a deck like you're requesting?
We're unaware of that.
Okay.
I, I didn't know I had to count everybody else's house. I was just trying to go with, you know, what ours is.
Okay, whatever. The answer to that question is none.
Okay.
And then going down the next four cross streets toward, toward Ventnor, we rode all those streets, and we found only one, one house four blocks away that has it, that's completely surrounded by Arbor Vita, that you can't even see it, and that's it. So of all the cross streets going in the city, we, I've found no we'll say developmental pattern that exists this way.
Okay.
So I'm informing you of that.
Jay, if I may also talk.
Please, please.
I looked at the street, I went to the site, and I looked in the, both directions, even though Cambridge is one block away almost from, from the bay. And I also looked across the street. This would be the first property that basically encroaches on, there is a streetscape where there's conformity with most of the properties on both sides. This would be the first one that really sticks out. So I think unless we say no totally, or there's some kind of reduction in the port size, I'd have to say no.
Well, what I'm thinking, just to tag on to what you're saying, Roman, is maybe it seems a little excessive for, you know, how far out he wants to bring the deck. If we could look at it more as a side yard setback, he'd have to trim it back, but he wouldn't have as much protrusion. I don't know if that works. I mean, he'd still need the variance, because we have to consider it a front yard, but maybe use the criteria for a side yard setback.
Our goal is to try to utilize the view. At the end of the street, we have the bay view, and that's what we're really trying to utilize with the property. We really don't have much space behind the house, so we figured, hey, well, a deck on the side would good utilization to see the, to see the bed. We're allowed right now a five-foot deck, which, you, you know, a five-foot deck isn't even wide enough for a table. So that's the reason we went to twelve feet. And if we can meet somewhere to try to, you know, make this work, we're willing to do that, yes.
What would be a seven-foot deck, wouldn't it? If you have a five-yard set, a five-foot setback, then you'd have a seven, seven.
No, no, we're, we're allowed five feet right now. It's, since it's a front yard setback, it's ten feet from our property line.
I know that, but I'm saying if we use the criteria for a side yard setback.
Oh, is that what it is? I didn't know what the side yard setback was, seven feet.
I mean, because you're a corner, you're considered two front yards, and this is one of the problems. But that's the way the, the city views it. So if you, if we, if the board would want to look at it as a side yard setback, at least you're not sticking out quite as far. I don't know if that's the amount of space you would want, and I don't know if that helps your view or not. But, you know, I don't, I don't see this going real well otherwise.
Can we consider ten feet just to be able to make it so we can fit a table and chairs? That's all we need to get on this deck is a table and chairs.
So where does that put him as far as variance goes?
That puts us back.
Setback.
How much, Roger?
Five and a half foot. And to Lorraine's point, a side yard setback for that area is eight feet. And I just want to point out that the building is already an existing non-conforming setback on Wellington Avenue by four and a half feet. So the building's closer than it's supposed to be. You know, that, that's no fault of their own. Perhaps like an eight-foot deck and a seven and a half foot setback that kind of gets you closer to where Planted Word member Lorraine Salata is kind of guiding you towards. Right, I think that would be adequate for a, a table and chairs, but that's, that's not my choice or call to make. I'm just trying to give you some, some advice.
Or actually, I mean, if you don't mind me jumping in here again, is to you, you could put a very lovely patio there with pavers or something, because your coverage is way under, and this way you would definitely be able to bring it out further.
Well, we looked at, we looked at that, and the issue with that is that you, there's a berm at the end of the road. So at the end of Wellington, there's that berm there. Right. You can't see, you can't see over the berm unless you're standing on two feet high, which is, you know, basically that height. If you're on the ground, you can't see the water.
Tail table.
Would you, would you have access to the deck?
Uh, from what, the house?
Hello?
I think he froze up.
He froze up again.
Okay, go ahead.
He's frozen. All right, we'll move on.
Yes, there will be access from the house to the deck. There'll be a six-foot slider installed.
Sorry, I'm, I'm losing you guys, but I'm at the elevation of the deck. Is it three, three steps up from the ground?
Oh, the elevation of the deck, yeah, I got it right here.
At nineteen inches from grade.
Okay, thank you, sorry. Yep, thank you.
And it has a roof on it, too, I just want to point.
Any, any access, are there steps, are there steps to your yard?
Wait, wait, hold on, everybody stop. This not was not Roger, does this, is this being proposed as a roofed deck?
Correct.
Oh, that changes the whole thing.
Right. Yeah, it certainly puts it in a different light.
Yeah, that's a whole different light, all right. Yeah.
That was my concern with having the roof on it.
Yeah.
I, I think it's so inconsistent with whatever, everything else that's in that neighborhood. I mean, we're not talking about on the island where things are tight. We're talking about a, a light and air open space lot. I think it's, it's just it just blocks that whole corridor.
Right, well, on your side, there's nothing like it on the street from, from Dorset Avenue to Wellington to Harvard, nothing like that.
Right, but how does that, I mean, does that make it right that none of the other properties have it? I mean, I, I don't understand why.
According to land use, it's a developmental pattern. And we, and our, our board is looking at developmental patterns.
Okay, I mean, our, our big argument is, you know, that our curb setback is, or our offset seventeen feet, where everybody else is about ten feet. So there's four for the property that, you know, isn't really even ours.
Wellington Avenue has an eighty-foot right of way. A lot of these wider roads are intended to have a wider view corridor. So you want to occupy a portion of that view corridor with a roofed deck. That, that's, that's a problem. I, I see you're having a hard time overcoming that with your proofs to the board. So I, I think you ought to look at somehow come up with a compromise to pull this thing in.
I mean, we're willing to compromise. What about the, does, does the roof have to, or is the roof, what's caused?
Is the roof a deciding factor?
Yes, is the roof a deciding factor on this, or is it the, the actual size of the deck?
To me, the roof is my biggest issue.
Yes.
And is that for which, just so we know, what reason for line of sight, or just because?
So, so the, the deck itself is proposed at nineteen, twenty inches off grade. For the most part, people are going to be able to see over that from their homes that live further back down that corridor that we're talking about, the Wellington Avenue corridor.
Right.
What you have are views and vistas that are protected by setbacks. What you're proposing to do is to put, expand the bulk and mass of your structure, your home into that view corridor. By, by taking the roof off, you leave that area open for people to look through. So why setbacks are there? They, they allow airlight and open space. Had you, and I have, you really should have hired a professional to help you with this, honestly. You know, that, those professionals know what we're talking about, know what we're asking you for.
Right.
You, you seem to think you're tied, you, you're guaranteed this variance or this relief because you live on a wider street. That's, that's not the case. Well, there's, there's, there's variance proofs you have to put on the record for us to review and say, okay, we agree with that, we can grant you the relief that you're requesting. That's why you'll see the applicants behind you will have professionals with them to make these arguments. So if, if you're willing to go, you know, you understand you want to, you want to negotiate and try and reduce the impact, but you keep going back to, well, we should be able to do our property what we want. There's setbacks for reasons, and there's reasons to, to grant relief for those setbacks, but we're not hearing them in this application. But I'm sorry to be that pain in the ass, but everyone else has to provide those reasons, and I haven't heard one yet, other than our, you know, we have a, we have a deeper lot from the curb than anybody else. Well, you have the same setback requirement as everybody else on Wellington Avenue.
We're willing to compromise with the size of the deck. You know, if the roof is the deciding factor, then it's the deciding factor, but if we're going to be able to get a ten-foot deck with no roof, I mean, we'll take a ten-foot deck with no roof. If we're able to get an eight-foot deck with a roof, well, then we might consider that as well.
Well, you might have to consider an eight-foot deck with no roof.
You get retractable.
Willing to compromise.
We are willing to make a compromise. I mean, we're, we're, you know, we just moved into the neighborhood, and we're putting significant money into this property. I mean, not only interior but exterior as well, and it is going to be, it's probably going to be one of the nicest houses on the street when we are done with property. We are going to occupy it full-time. We just moved from Chelsea Heights. We're trying to, you know, raise our family here, and, you know, we're just looking for some outside space. And I get that, you know, we're trying to conform with everybody else on Wellington Avenue. You know, and we're not trying to, you know, have our house stick out past everybody else, and you know, we just want to add outside space, a deck off the house, and if we have to conform and, and move it in and do what we have to do, then so be it. We have landscaping plan that we're going to, you know, do a very nice landscape around the deck. Low shrubs so that we don't, you know, obstruct view. And, you know, we do have a driveway that is next to the deck. And, you know, there is a line of sight that we know is a concern, and we don't want that to come into play either. So, you know, it's not, you know, we don't want it, we don't want a safety issue here either. Especially if you're on the corner.
I, I think at this time, I don't know how the board feels about it, but I think that the consensus of the board may be is, is that they'd be looking for an eight-foot deck with no roof. I think that's the consensus. I, I can pull the board, but that's what they're, I think they're willing, that's to do. So that's where we are.
Hey, one other quick comment. Did, Rich, did you talk to some of your neighbors at all?
Um, just our one neighbor across the street, the Uppermann's, they basically were the only ones that would be actually affected. Bill Tills, well, Bill Tillsley's house is actually owned by Roger, Jim Proctor, and we spoke a lot with him, and he just basically said, Rich, I don't care what you do, as long as you make the house look real nice and invite me over for a cocktail. And I told Jim that that is absolutely on the table, because he actually doesn't live at the property. He, uh, he lives down on Harvard Avenue, but the house is unoccupied. It's been unoccupied since they put Bill in.
So you say Upperman lives on, on Cambridge Avenue across from you?
Yes, directly across from us, Upperman lives on Cambridge. Yeah, they're the houses directly across the street, so they would be affected the most.
Well, the people up and down that are on the sides of you would also be affected from the couple of blocks back.
They would have to see past Bill's trees.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at. That's what I'm, I'm seeing that that, that corridor is.
There, there is no line of sight past his house.
Right.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at it, too.
And, you know, one thing to inform you also is that, that waterfall, that water view you have, that vacant lot at the end of the street, it needs sometime be developed.
And we're going to fight like hell not, for that not to happen.
You may be it, but they, they have rights to, so.
Yeah, and we'll be.
We don't know, we don't know about that. We don't know about that, so we'll go here, we'll just deal with this now. So, what do you want to do? We're going to have to bring this to a vote, and we're going to vote on, what we're going to do is vote on something.
Hey, before we decide anything, let's, let's open it up to the public and see if there's any. Hey, let, let, before we decide anything, let's, let's open it up to the public and see if there's any comments for the public.
I, I, I would like to do that. Uh, let's do that first. I, uh. Uh, Jim, could you uh, poll the public and see if there's anyone who wishes to make comment on this application?
So anybody in the public who wishes to speak or make comment on this application, please make yourself known within Zoom by raising your hand or within the chat feature and you'll be recognized. Once recognized, let me turn your camera on and um, speak to the board.
Any takers, Jim?
No takers.
Say it one more time and then we'll close the public session.
So anybody from the audience who wishes to speak or question on this application, please make yourself known within Zoom by raising your hand. Or within the chat feature and you'll be recognized. Once recognized, we turn your camera on, unmute yourself and speak to the board.
Hey Jim, it's Chris Ballen. Can I say something?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thanks, Jack.
Chris. Um, Chris.
Yeah, yeah.
You ta- you testifying as a, just a person?
Person in public.
All right, right. Uh, you swear, swear the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
Okay.
Like, I, I'm sitting here pringing, not to say anything, but. And, and Lance is right, there's, there's really things to be said for this application in, in favor of it. I mean, you, you can't forget you have an eighty foot right of way that's never going to be blocked. And their house has the benefit of that extra four or five feet between the edge of sidewalk. And a property line, which will give this deck the appearance that it's. Then, whatever that additional five feet is, twelve feet back or seventeen feet back, whatever that may be, that's never going to get lost. You have, so you have almost. A, a double setback because of the way the right of way goes by their house. Um. I, I would also throw out the option to them that if they get a ten foot deck possibly or an eight foot deck, they can have a partial roof to the setback. Or a foot beyond their setback, whatever you guys feel would not be too offensive. Because direct sun on that deck or an eight foot deck back there, or that. Rain's idea is good, side yard, because they have a little bit of hardship with the corner lot. Um, I just, I see two young kids here trying to raise, you know, raise their family in better heights for the rest of their lives. And what I'm hearing is, these guys didn't have a chance to think, walk through the door. They, they deserve a little bit of. A little bit of like, let's see if you can make this work. And if it's an eight foot deck or a ten foot deck with a partial roof. So be it, it's not going to be that bad because of the additional right of way.
You also have retract, you also have retractable awnings, which we all use.
I, I, I have, yeah, I have them too. And I, and I'm, I'm a big believer in those. I, I want you guys to do, what you guys know is right. I just sitting here, I, I thought I could.
Okay, thank you.
So our thought on the, we, and we've thought about the awning, and the only issue with the awning is, we all know what the window is coming down Wellington Avenue, and when it comes off the bay. If that awning is extended out eight feet or ten feet. I mean. It, you know what's going to happen over the next five years. It's going to have to be replaced twice. Um, it's just like every other person's screen door. They all get ripped off.
I had awnings on Harvard Avenue on the water for twenty years. It never got taken, uh, never got taken off once.
You had good awnings.
That's what you buy.
Well. If, if there's no roof being able to be put on this, then, I mean, so be it. I mean, we do have the space to go off the back of the house to maybe utilize that for covered porch. You know, we were just, we were trying to get the view of the bay and cover the porch and not have it too hot for the baby. That was basically it. So I mean, if that's not going to happen, then that's not going to happen. Um.
You could, uh, you could reach out to a professional and table it for now and come back.
We spoke with Dan Poncio at length about this and uh, Dan wasn't able to meet tonight. But uh, we went over all our, you know. Concerns and Roger's concerns with him and, you know, this is all we've come up with. So if this isn't going to happen, we are going to go ahead and move on with our project and uh, figure out another way to utilize outside space.
Are you guys willing to reuse it ten feet with no roof?
We'll do ten feet with no roof. We'll just, you know, either like, do the retractable awning, which isn't ideal. At least we still get the deck. You know, ten feet, no roof, it is what it is. That's fine. Um. And in the answer.
Where I was leaning, I, I was leaning as a, a ten foot deck. I have a ten foot deck off the side of my place.
Right.
It allows you to do some things outside.
Couple of feet off grade, I mean, it shouldn't have.
What, what I was trying to get to is some of the, the proofs that we typically, we talked about.
The public portion, are you finished your comments?
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, Jim.
All right, you're finished your comments.
Chris, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Chris.
All right. All right, uh, well, first of all, uh, at this time, Tom, I'm not, Jim, pardon me, we have no more in the queue for comments. So the public portion, uh, uh, we should advertise it one more time because we had one speaker. So ask again and then we'll close the public portion.
Is anybody from the public who wishes to speak or question on this application? Please make yourself known within Zoom by raising your hand or within the chat feature and you'll be recognized. Once recognized, let me turn your camera on and unmute yourself and speak to the board.
Oh, we have no takers, Jim, so, okay. The public portion of this particular application is now closed. Uh, now, uh, Rich, you have comments you can make if you want, you know, it's your application, you can proceed. Otherwise, we'll.
Mr. Chairman, I, I have a couple of questions I asked.
Okay.
Yes.
Rich, do you think if you put a ten foot wide deck there without a roof? Into that setback area. I mean, you are just between, you're between Harvard and Cambridge, and there's nobody else beyond you. Do you feel that any benefits by you building that deck will outweigh any detriments compared to the neighbors and uh, any negative effect to those around you?
On the Wellington side, you mean, or, or, or behind you?
Any, anywhere. Do you, yeah.
No, no, it, it, when I tell you this is going to be a beautifully done project, I do all the work myself. Um, it's going to be, when, when it gets done, it's going to be a, a very nice piece of uh, construction when it is completed.
Right, and will you also agree that if you. Put a ten foot wide deck there with a roof? That those benefits would actually be diminished somewhat because of the roof?
No, I don't, I don't think so because of how far back it really is from, from the curb. And the only line of sight really would be the upperman's house, which is across the street. And um, we've spoke to them at length about this.
So my next question would be, your ten foot deck versus the twelve foot that was originally proposed. That provides more of a benefit than, than prior than to what you originally proposed, correct?
Absol- yeah, absolutely. Ten foot, it would be, would be great. I mean, that would be enough space for us. And then when the rail, when you put the railings on, you do lose about six to eight inches, you know, of space on the deck. So I mean, ten foot would kick us back right around nine and nine feet, and that would be nine feet of usable space. And that's, that's fair for, you know, I mean, we have a big family, so we definitely need to, you know, try to fit everybody out there.
And you, you did allude to the fact that, and you and I did speak, that you were going to. Have a really nice landscape package around that front and around Cambridge Avenue side, correct?
Yes, we're big on landscaping. Our last property, I mean, we went crazy. We go crazy with our landscaping and that's very important to us.
I would suggest, if, if the board would be in agreement with that, that you would add two, two street trees along Cambridge Avenue. And possibly wave those along Wellington Avenue because there is no governor strip. And the city just did some paving there. So maybe it's, three trees would be along Cambridge and not Wellington. As, as a condition of any approval, would you agreeable to that?
Any trees, any landscaping that they want us to do is fine. I mean, probably what we're going to do is going to be above and beyond. Um, what would be requested. We do take our landscaping very seriously and we did in our last home too. Um.
Uh.
And that roof you are proposing, that, that's going to be an exposed truss roof?
Yes, exposed trough wrapped in AZAC and then it will have, uh, like, we're, we're going to leave the ceiling vaulted on the inside. High hats and, and you know, a couple of fans in there. But uh, yes, exposed.
Okay. All right. Uh, the street trees uh, on Wellington Avenue, Roger, uh, to my knowledge, there's not trees in that governor strip in there. So uh, we would not, we could, we could do a waiver on the street trees on Wellington Avenue, correct?
Correct.
Okay, um. Well, we could put a waiver in there for the trees on Wellington Avenue. Uh, they, because they also block. Okay.
Well, the street trees also could, could go in the right of way behind the sidewalk.
Yeah, they could. There's room there too. But, but they may block the.
But then it's gonna, yeah, it's going to start.
Yeah, it's starting to block his view. So that was the only reason uh, in there.
If we did low shrubs, you know, low two and a half foot to three foot shrubs in the beds surrounding the deck. Uh, that wouldn't obstruct the view and it wouldn't obstruct the driveway view either. You don't want to obstruct the driveway view when you're pulling out.
Right, exactly. So uh, but if. If you're, are you, we've bought, we got to bring this to a vote. Uh, are you, uh, uh, if you're willing to accept a ten foot deck with no roof. Then we'll vote on that.
Ten foot deck with no roof, or a ten foot deck with a roof is totally out of the question?
Uh, the offer on the table is a ten foot deck with no roof.
We'll take what we can get.
Okay.
I, I had a. Roger was asking all those questions about the roof. I, I don't understand why we're going back to with no roof. Did I miss something?
No, just questions were asked, that's all.
Okay.
The roof is really what's going to make this whole thing look proper. And i- i- it's really going to, you know, change the whole curb appeal of the property. I mean, the, the roof is what is going to make this project look. I mean, it, much better and finished. A, a, a ten foot deck off the side of the house, it'll look fine. Um, with vinyl railings and everything, it's going to look fine, but you know, the roof and. The AZAC work and mahogany work that's going to go in underneath this deck is really what's going to make this look. Great. I mean, that is, the roof is what's going to make it look great. The decks, the deck's just a deck.
What if, what if I slip the roof towards Wellington?
What if I slip the roof toward Wellington?
So your, your profile would be less.
Yeah, but it, I, I would disagree with that, Roger. From a structural standpoint, I, I think the roof line as proposed. Kind of mirrors the, the roof of the, of the structure.
Sure.
Yeah.
And, and bringing it down. Look, the, the side of that building right now is very, don't take this the wrong way, to teach, to choo choos, I apologize. It's very blah.
It's very blah. It's very blah. There's, there's not a lot going on there. There's two ugly windows and that's it.
Right.
So, so the reason I wanted to hear from the public is, you know, the, the corner lot, I didn't know it was the uppermans. But that corner lot, they're the ones that I would be most concerned about with their views.
Yes, yes.
No one's here to, to make any comments about it.
Um, we, we've known them for a long time. I've probably known them since I was five years old. I played hockey with Ryan my whole life. Right. They, they've been very excited that we moved into the neighborhood.
So I, I think, you know. Bringing it back a little bit, I think that's, that's, that helps out a little bit, giving us a five foot setback to the, the property line. Now, I'd like to revisit the roof a little bit. I, I like the way it's going to look on the end of the house.
Thank you.
Is that, that's just a big, that, that's a big plain wall right there right now. We're driving by, it has no architectural appeal. Um. I don't know. What, what's the rest of the board's thoughts?
Pressure, what, what do you think about pulling that roof back to eight feet, ten foot deck, set it back eight foot, so you have a two foot open space? But, but then you're going to have a column in the middle of the deck. You don't want.
Yeah, then you're going to have a column. It's not going to fall right because with the post and everything, I'm going to set the post properly and.
Did I hear throughout this that you were considering putting a deck, a covered deck on the back of the house? Wasn't that another option that you brought up?
Yeah, we, well, that's like our, our, and if we can't get anything, you know, if this was whole thing was going to get kicked back, we were going to go off the back, but then we lose our driveway in the back. So then parking becomes an issue. So we're trying not to lose the driveway off the back of the house. Oh, and the view, I mean, then, then you lose the whole point of seeing the back. So that, that's really, you know, that's, you know, if we don't get a deck, then we go off the back of the house and it is what it is. Um, but that's really not where we want to put it.
I have a question for Roger. Uh, does it have to be a solid roof?
For me?
Yes. Is it a different consideration if it is not a solid covered? Like an arbor? Slotted?
Well, I think they want protection from the, uh, with the young baby. I think they want protection from the son.
Yeah, that's our thing is because that side of the house was, I mean, it gets sun pretty much almost all day and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
Good space where we put the dog out there and don't have to worry about, you know, traffic and everything.
Pardon, pardon me one second, Rich. Board members.
Jay, Jay, I would vote for the roof if the deck was only eight feet. Cause I'm looking at the aerial right now of the street of Wellington. And even ten feet bothers me sticking out, but I can concede eight feet with a roof. Cause I agree with what is said about the architectural enhancement if there was a roof, but I don't want ten feet.
Okay.
I think eight foot is, is a very narrow deck.
Uh, I, I would agree with that, Lance. Uh, ten foot is a much more serviceable deck. The, the, the concern is not across, of people across the street. The concern is people on the same side of the street to the right. To the right and left.
Cambridge Avenue, the, the, the street opposite is the upperman, is, the house opposite of them is the upperman's on the corner.
If you look at Upperman's property, he has trees blocking those views anyway, so.
Right, no one can see past their house.
Yeah, I'm two blocks away, so I, I know, I don't have any objection with ten foot or a roof. That's just my opinion, but.
Okay. All right. All right.
Eight feet with a roof and ten feet without, is that what we're trying to?
No, we, we haven't hardened that yet in there. That's what I'm doing right now.
It's really gonna, no roof is going to kind of make it look almost worse.
Yeah.
Especially with the side of that house, like how white and straight it is and there's nothing going on, no windows there.
I, I, Lance, I think the simplest way to process is, is do a, do a, a resolution for ten feet with a roof and put it to a vote.
We like it. And everyone's invited over.
Uh, and then you see there, yea or nay vote. You know, it's a, either person has a yea, a yea or nay vote.
Was eight foot, you wouldn't invite us?
Uh, it's questionable. I'm going to have to.
All right, guys, we won't fit. We got to move on here. So, um, so that's it. So at this time, I would.
I'll make a motion for a ten foot deck with a roof.
It could be a five and a half foot setback, which is two feet more than initially presented.
Leo, you want to, uh, will you want to, you want to frame that motion, please, Leo?
Yeah, I mean, I think Lance did a pretty good job.
Okay.
As good a job as I can do, but it's the one variance. It's a, it's a front yard setback to the proposed roof deck. Um, they initially presented it at three and a half feet from the property line. They've agreed to move it back two feet to five and a half feet. Lot coverage is, is, per the testimonies, more than compliant. And then we would, I think with the street trees, we said. Two on Cambridge, but Wellington, we would waive them for, for obvious reasons.
That is correct.
That's the motion in a second.
So I have a motion in a second, please.
I'll motion to second motion.
Okay, I have a roll call vote. State your reasons, please.
Commissioner, Dan Grant.
Um. You know, I, I do see this as, as a view corridor there, but it is a rather wide one. It, it's eighty foot right of way. Um, the setback to the structure, even the new structure from the curb line is going to be substantial. Um, I like that we pulled it back an extra two feet just to, just to give a little bit from that property line. It's going to feel like it's still almost ten feet from the curb line, not the curb line, excuse me, the sidewalk edge. Um, because they're five feet from that, and I think they're further than five feet from the property line to the sidewalk, if the survey is accurate. Um. The roof, I think, makes the deck to me. Uh, looking at that, the architecture that's going to be exposed being, I, I think that's going to be very attractive on that side of the structure. Uh, as I said in my further previous comments, that side of the house is, is very plain. I think this will add some architectural features to it. Um, had residents come out that are immediately affected by this, I would have a different opinion. But I, I take a lot in what the neighborhood says, and no one came out to even, you know, voice, voice any concern at all. I like the fact that we have a young family that's trying to improve their property. Uh, on, on our island, in our community, so I vote yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Tom Happen? Not sure if Tom's still there. Tom?
Um, it doesn't appear to be here.
Okay.
Wait, wait, Tom?
He ne- he never, he never recognized himself from the.
He never, okay, okay.
Jay Cook?
Uh, I'll vote yes on this application.
Thank you, Jay.
The uh, the uh, uh. Uh, there's, some of the arguments regarding the architecture of the house do help in, in there. Uh, there's distance away, the house is about twenty-three feet from the sidewalk, so there's plenty of extra room. There's room in there for sightlines and so on. Uh, so this, the decking, it's pulled back, it's, it's there, it works. Um, uh, I would have liked to have seen other materials on, more on land use and so on. But I think they've given us enough to vote, vote on it and approve it, so I vote yes.
Herman's Abbey Hatch.
I uh, I'm still concerned about the fact that we're intruding. Into the sightline for the rest of the structures on the street. I don't think that it enhances and improves the. I don't think that it enhances and improves the zoning ordinance or the master plan. So uh, in that regard, you know, I think that, you know, extending out uh, isn't a great idea. I would have preferred eight feet with the roof personally, I understand the circumstance. I'm not happy, but I will vote yes.
Thank you.
Lorraine Salata?
I'm really not happy about the roof, I can live with a ten foot deck. You know, a ten foot deck with an awning, retractable, however you wanna do it, I, to me, the thing was important, uh, doesn't advance any of the causes that we kind of uh, probably would love to, so I'm voting no.
Dan Smith III?
Uh, I'm gonna vote in favor of the application, I think that the uh, the positives outweigh the negatives, there was no negative comments from uh, the public. Uh, if you go down Cambridge Avenue to the five hundred block, there's a couple really nice um, open decks in in that neighborhood that uh, at night, they really shine and uh, bring life to to the neighborhood with the indirect lighting and things, and I think that being on Wellington Avenue, I think that would be a real focal point and clean up that uh, wall. Uh, and I think that uh, you know, the landscaping aspects and the passion that these folks have for their new home uh, really sway uh, my vote, so I'm in favor.
Thank you, Dan.
Mike Weizen?
I think Wellington Avenue really dictates some of the relief that we're gonna grant them tonight. Uh, the the street's so wide that I I think that the debt, a ten foot debt uh, on that street is not gonna really affect the neighbors at at all, either side. Uh, aesthetically, I I'm glad we're putting the roof on because it'll match the peak of the house. The fact that you have it at a lower level shows that it's more of a family oriented oriented uh, deck than something that's coming off the bedroom on the second floor. With all that, I'm I'm in favor, but I I do wanna note if Roland isn't happy, will he be invited for a drink, even though he voted for you?
Roland will change his mind once he gets on this deck.
Okay, good, and I'm in favor.
Alright, before we go to the next one, Tom, uh, did Tom? Okay.
At 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 first glance, I thought that this was excessive on that street, you know, coming uh, that close to the side property line. I didn't realize that there was that much distance between the uh, the sidewalk and the property line. Um, I don't think anybody is really negatively impacted by this, except possibly the neighbor directly across the street, across Cambridge, but with the width of Cambridge, with the Wellington Avenue, his views are not gonna be affected at all if if there is a view of the of the bay at all, so um, I don't think it really negatively impacts the light air and open space of that of that block, so I will vote in favor of it.
Thank you, Peter.
Or complete, Jay?
Okay, obviously, you both have, uh, know you have been approved, wish you the best of luck and welcome you to the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
We appreciate it.
Very excited, thank you very much.
Look.
Thank you.
Alright, take care. Alright, uh, the next application we have this evening is eight North Cambridge Avenue. And uh, so let's have the applicants uh, forward. That's uh, that's uh, Lynn Barrick, is it?
Yes, right.
Okay, uh, is there, uh, are both of you gonna be sworn?
Yes, actually, all three of us.
Oh, I, okay, oh, three of you, okay. Are you being represented by anyone?
No, I know.
You're representing yourselves, okay, so uh, we'll have our solicitors swear you in, uh, and then we'll go from there.
Okay, if you guys could just each go down the line, state your name and address for the record, I'll swear the three of you in together.
Lynn Barrack, eight North Cambridge.
Allison Lupinetti, eight North Cambridge.
Matthew Meyer, eight North Cambridge.
And please raise your right hand each where affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes.
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 Thank you, Carmel, did you get, did you get those names?
Hi Lynn, I need you to spell your last, not Lynn, I'm sorry, Allison, could you please spell your last name?
Sure, L U P I N E T T I.
Got it, yes.
Alright, uh, now what we're gonna do as far as to hear is Mr. McLaren, we'll give you a preamble of your application. And then we'll turn it over to you, and then you'll you'll make your presentation, we'll do a public portion, and then go back to you again. And then we'll we'll do, the board will do its discussions in between. So, alright, so at this time, Mr. McLaren, could you, uh, you're sworn, so please uh, give a preamble on this application, and then we'll turn it over to, and your your first name again?
Lynn.
Lynn and the other person?
Matthew.
Matthew, okay, Lynn and Matthew, okay, who's gonna be the spokesman?
Uh, uh, combined, me for the most part, I can answer most of the technical questions.
Okay, uh, Matt, you're you're primary, and then everybody else will go around you, so we'll we'll conduct with you first.
Yes.
Roger, please uh, good, please start.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, the report is originally dated February fourth, two thousand twenty-two, revised March eighth. In light of some new plans for the application to Lynn Barack, eight North Cambridge Avenue, block one nineteen, lot twenty-nine. Engineering and planning review seeking C variances located within the R four single family zoning district. This could be considered a hardship variance as the narrowness of the lot, but it's mainly a substantial benefit variance. The D variance for height has been corrected, so there is no D variance for height. A materials reviewed, I just wanna make sure that everybody's on board with the late, last set of plans is dated December twenty-six, two thousand twenty-one, last revised February twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two. So you turn my report to page two with the project description as follows, the applicant seeks relief from the city of Letner's land use requirements. Receive variances and variance for height to construct new non-compliant third floor to an existing Dutch colonial style home, which is in itself non-floated compliant with a deep crawl space that meets the definition of a basement. It's my understanding that the basement or crawl space will be partially filled in, uh, requiring a relocation of utilities onto the second floor. The uh, the height proposed is not permitted on such a narrow property, I that again, that's one reason why we changed the ordinance to prevent tall skinny houses such as what is being proposed. But the lot is very narrow and deep, existing house has three bedrooms and five bedrooms are proposed, which increases the demand for off-street parking space requirements and also additional variances. The chart is on page two and continued on page three. And I want to go over the eleven variances being requested. Again, uh, front yard setback to the principal structure, whereas twelve feet is required minimum setback, seven point four two feet exists, and seven point four two feet is proposed for the second floor and the deck. Front yard, and that's an expansion of a non-conforming setback, a portion of the first floor today is already existing non-conforming, so they're making it more non-conforming. Front yard setback to the front first floor deck, whereas seven feet is a required minimum setback. Five foot encroachment, seven point four two feet exists, and seven point four two feet is proposed. Front yard setback, second floor deck, actually, there is no second floor deck proposed now, that's been filled in with with solid building. And again, it's one of the setbacks, so it's a second floor front yard setback where seven point four two feet exists. And actually, uh, where is that now? Not shown. Front yard setback to the third floor deck where seven feet is required minimum setback, which is a five foot approach. Seven point four two feet exist and five feet is proposed. Turn to the other variances, side yard setback, principal structure, whereas four feet is required minimum setback, three point zero feet, zero six feet exists, and three point zero six feet is proposed for the third floor, so it's an expansion of a non-conforming setback on the right side. Side yard setback to the porch, third floor and first floor. Three point zero feet, zero six feet exists, three point zero six feet is proposed, it's an expansion of a non-conforming setback. Building height, whereas thirty-one feet is the maximum permitted building height for lots less than forty feet wide, and thirty-four feet is proposed. So that is a C variance, and again, originally proposed was a D variance, so they brought that down. Eve height, whereas two feet is a maximum permitted eve height above the third floor, and eight feet is proposed. Stories, whereas a maximum permitted stories is two point five, two point five stories exists and three stories is proposed. Third floor deck, whereas the third floor deck is required to be located within the building envelope or setback to meet the required setback. No third floor deck exists and one is proposed. Technically, this that this does fall within the building setback or the building envelope, but because an irrelevance is needed for the front yard face of the building, it is a variance. Off-street parking, whereas three off-street parking spaces are now required instead of two, zero compliance spaces are existing and zero compliance spaces are proposed. Waivers, they seek a waiver for the landscape plan. I'm not gonna go through all my com, all my comments at this time, but uh, the burden of proof is pretty heavy on this one for these number of variances, so I turn it over to the applicant at this time.
Alright, uh, Matt?
Yes. Okay, so basically what we got going on here, guys, is um, we've been on Cambridge Avenue since about twenty-eleven. Um, we owned a small little rancher just uh, further towards the bay. Um, we started to expand our family, um, the rancher no longer worked, this this house became available. Um, it is currently a three-bedroom, um, and we need a five. And so what we're, what we're hoping to do is take the roof off, put the third story on. Um, we do plan on keeping some of the same curb appeal that the house currently has with the soffits going around the house. Um, and we're trying to basically add those three extra bedrooms up top there. And as far as the parking, um, I had spoke with my neighbor, Robert, I what was it, Robert Marissa? Robert Marissa, he, um, so if you're looking at the front of our house currently, he is to the left side of it. Um, he is allowing us to basically do a shared driveway, um, we allow him to park there. Um, we use uh, part of his concrete and we park there using part of his concrete. We also have a one-car garage that can, we can drive right up to. Um, so we can fit, really, we can fit four cars with the garage by sharing the driveway with my neighbor. Which would put us down to one car on the street. If we had four cars, but we won't, we won't ever have two cars down there.
If that's a shared driveway, how's your, how's your neighbor use a driveway?
Well, we we're we're only down there on the weekends, and we allow him to park, uh, we allow him to take the driveway, like for instance, we had these big snowstorms that came through. Um, and you can't park on the street for the plow trucks to come through, and we would always tell them, hey, look, use our driveway whenever you want, basically, and if if we're coming there and you're still on our driveway, we will park on the street and, you know, we we share, you know, we're trying to be neighborly to each other.
So what happens when both of you there at the same time?
We we can alternate, I mean, it's it's, to me, it's not a big deal, you know, it's.
Alright, well, uh, I don't know, Leo, uh, can we even, we can't even entertain a shared driveway to my knowledge. Uh, because there's no, there's no legal documents providing it, correct?
No, I don't think there's like an easement for it or anything like that, I I'm not sure that's what they're even trying to suggest.
Yeah, it's mostly a gentleman's understanding.
Yeah, I think it's just to their point that three are required, and while they may have zero compliance spaces, I I I think what they're trying to suggest is they they can make it work, uh, and the board can take, you know, take that for whatever, whatever they feel is worth.
Alright, what's the width of the driveway?
Uh, on paper, it is six point seven five feet is what we currently own.
Six point seven, six, so not even seven feet?
No, not quite seven feet, but a Jeep Wrangler actually fits on that without encroaching one, which is what we drive.
Jeep Wrangler is about five feet wide, right?
Uh, it's a little, just about an inch or two past six feet, it's it's tight, but it fits.
Right, well, how do you open, how do you open the doors?
Well, you open the door and you step on the neighbor's property.
Right, and what happens if the neighbor puts, somebody spies that house and uh, puts a fence up?
It becomes much tighter, it becomes a lot more difficult.
You can't open your doors to your vehicle and get out.
Now, we would have to drive all the way back to the garage to be able to do that, because the driveway hooks around.
Right, but what is the size, what is the size of the garage?
It's a one-car garage, it's uh, it is twelve by eighteen. It's detached, yeah.
It's the, it's detached, it's twelve by eighteen, the interior is about seventeen feet, probably in that.
Uh, seventeen and a half, yeah.
Somewhere in there, okay. Alright, continue, please.
Um, so yeah, so basically, we're trying to create our dream home, essentially, um, with our growing family. Um, this would really, all of our stars will align, basically, um, to be able to do this property. Um, in its current condition, we we purchased the house, the house is, it's it's straight, it's got great structure to it. It just doesn't fit what we need currently. Um, and by getting these approvals, by squaring, you know, getting rid of the the steps that go up the one side of the house, just squaring that off, we're not protruding the front of the house out any, we're just gonna square that one corner off, and then do an open porch, um, are you, are you guys familiar at all with uh, North Cambridge Avenue? Yes. Okay, so.
We're very familiar with your house.
Oh, perfect, great, well, then you're probably familiar with my old house too, and my neighbor, so um, one of my neighbors, his name was Chris Lombardi. Um, I helped him build, rebuild his house, his front porch, and it turned out stunning, and that's basically what I wanna mimic, is a nice wide staircase, um, obviously, it's it's not too deep, it's only about eight feet deep, um.
Matt, Matt, I have to, that, let you know is is that, uh, in this application, there are proofs in land use that justification of variances. And the the the, what happened with the neighbors and other things and so on, it is nice to hear, but that's not the proofs that you need for an application. So I I think you have to start confiding yourself to addressing the variances and uh, the justifications for those.
Okay, so basically, uh, step one, the third, the third story, I guess, um, one second. The third floor deck, so basically, the third floor deck is gonna stay with inside the footprint of the home. Um, that third floor deck would actually also give us a bay view on on the house, um, which would be a great perk. We need the, we need the three other bedrooms on the house for our our family, basically, that way nobody is stuffing, you know, two or three people into one room. Uh, let's see, the height of the building, um, the height of the building is proposed for thirty-four feet. As far as that, I know we went off of the the nineteen twenty, or my surveyor went off the nineteen twenty-nine datum. Um, I'm not sure if they were going off of the eighty-eight, if they were supposed to go off the eighty-eight datum, but I I hired these guys to to, you know, make sure we're within, within the specs.
You're not. Well, your proposal is three feet higher.
Yeah, so that's, that's the, that's the problem we're falling under, right? And we're, to shrink the, to shrink the roof three feet, I know if we pulled a foot out of the pitch, you know, if we went from a five pitch to a four pitch, we can still do a shingled roof, we can gain a foot there, and we could pull a couple inches out of the wall height, um, but we could, it would be near impossible to grab that three feet. So that would be, you know, essentially a hardship for us, we really need that, that extra height.
Okay, continue.
And then as far as the um, the side setbacks, uh, the house is pre-existing non-conforming, we don't plan on changing any of the any of those sides, we're not building out past the structure, we just wanna build up and get rid of the basement. Um, pull all of our utilities onto the second floor, um, that way, there's no risk of any water basically hitting those.
When you're speaking about these variances, why don't you tell us what varies, what you're seeking and what your variance you're seeking as well? So, if it's a two-foot variance or three-foot variance, why don't you address that as well, as you, as you're going through?
Okay, um, there's, there's a, there's a lot here, so I'm just trying to.
One at a time.
Alright. All right. Front yard setback, um, it's required, no, um. Yeah, no, so we don't have twelve feet now, so the the only, so with the front yard setback. Um, where twelve feet is required, um, the house, the house doesn't, where where the house currently sits isn't, isn't twelve feet. So I guess that falls under the pre-existing, non-conforming as well. Um, basically, the only thing we're looking to do, what we're trying to achieve there is moving the staircase. Um, we're looking to take the staircase from where it is by squaring off the front of the building. And putting it on the center of the house.
Uh, tell us how far you have, what variance you're seeking. What, how much of the variance are you seeking?
I don't even know which variance this is.
Roger, do you want to help him? Roger.
I don't understand these plans myself, um.
Uh, these plans aren't the best, so uh, uh, so we'll see what we can do here. You might have to get help, but we have to go through this whole of the variances for the board on.
Yeah, I mean, if you guys wouldn't mind helping us go one by one, I mean, I I hired a professional to draw all this stuff and and it's. It's been a little bit of a nightmare for us trying to get everything.
Right.
To together in the star lines, I'm I'm not, I'm not an architect, I'm not a surveyor, I, you know, I'm I'm a contractor.
Well, Matt, Matt, let me, let me. This is two in a row here that that we've seen applicants trying to represent themselves and, look, I get trying to save, save dollars and I understand that. The the last one, we worked our way through it.
Yes, sir.
This one is really going to be hard for us board members to work through all of these variances and the justifications for them. Look, I I see what, I think I can see what you're trying to do. You're, you have a house that has a basement, I, very similar house to mine with with the whole basement, all my utilities are down there. You're trying to take that basement and move that up.
Correct.
Almost like an in, interior elevation of the home, you're not lifting the house.
Correct.
You're going to replace the space at the bottom on the top.
Yeah, we're looking to get rid of the two bedrooms and the bathroom down there, we're eliminating them.
A few years back, that's how FEMA had actually recommended people to elevate their homes. But it it it's a lot on this property, it it's a, it's a volume of of requests that you're asking and. You're trying to justify things that you don't have the background to justify. Do you know what I'm trying to say?
Yeah.
You need, you need either Dan Ponziio here, Art Pon, somebody, your architect, to help you get through this. I don't want to see, and I'm not saying if they were here, we would be willing to grant all of this, but. You're struggling to explain it to us and it's your project. Picture us who look at, you know, we're looking at four sets of plans tonight for four different applicants, one got tabled. But if you're having trouble understanding it, we're having an even more difficult time understanding what you're trying to explain to us and understand it. Uh, i- is it possible to to table this to to our next meeting and. And get one of these guys here to help you out, to explain the process, to explain the project and the relief you're asking for?
I mean, I I it's 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 always an option, um, my biggest problem is. Uh, is I I'm hoping that'll help me, um, what, whether it'll help me or not, it's because we've we've gone, we've done so much back and forth on this paperwork already, um.
The reason you did the paperwork back and forth because of the, some of the completeness, and that's been the problem.
Yeah, it's it's, uh, you know, the the professionals, it's. We hire these people and uh.
Who can we hire to to help us because the Dan Ponziio took four months for us to just get a survey.
Mr. Ponziio is a surveyor, that's all he, that's what he is.
So he's not going to be who can help us, correct?
You're re- representing an architect or or an end attorney is better, better suited for you. And we can't name, I can't name you a given, give you a name.
I understand that.
Uh, in there, but that would be the ideal people to be using.
So architect or attorney.
Uh, or a a la, a land use or an engineer that does land use.
No, I mean, another thing, I mean, we've, we've been, we've been watching, we've been, we've been on, on the Skype uh with your, with the last uh. Uh.
Last meeting.
The last meeting, and you know, you guys did a phenomenal job working through that with him, um, I was just hoping for a little bit of the same, I guess.
But he's, he asked for one, one area of relief. There's eleven variances here and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And and a lot of it is, I'm sorry.
It's a lot, it's a lot, can I interject a little bit?
Please, please, Peter. Go ahead, Peter.
Well, you have to understand, if if this goes before the board and we, and we disapprove it, you can't bring the same application back.
Sure.
You should really think about that.
And you don't, you wouldn't need to, you wouldn't need to redo your notices and all, we would make a, an announcement tonight for for what that's worth. So I I know that, that seems to cause a lot of people, um.
Yes, we've actually had to redo the notices twice now, um, without redoing the notices.
You would not have to do it if if we, if we, if you agree to table this tonight. You would not have to re-notice those neighbors, we would make an announcement that, and honestly, after tonight, we're back live in person. Which will be a lot easier for people to understand what's going on. Just going through the the Zoom process is is problematic. Um, but that's.
You've got a lot of variances there. Yeah.
Okay.
That's your call, Matt, no, we can't tell you to do it, we're suggesting it.
Well, you you have a call now, you make a decision to go or to continue or to.
Uh, it sounds like it's suicide if I continue, um, so I guess we're going to have to table it.
What is, what is your timeframe to make these improvements?
To build it?
Yes.
Um.
Oh, tomorrow, right?
Yeah, I mean, I I have a crew of guys lined up, ready, ready to go, um, what, what my absolute.
You have work, you have workman in there now.
Yeah, I do, demo, demo, demoing, yes, correct, I I got approvals for that.
Right, and how much of the house are you demoing?
Just strictly, so the the only thing that's being demoed is just plaster and last, um, no wire.
What floors?
Uh, first, second, and basement, because there's two bedrooms in the basement, there's a bathroom in the basement. We want to eliminate those, my architect needs some information on the floor joists, the wall, the wall studs, he needs to know what's going on for our values and stuff. Um, we're not touching anything on the outside of the house, we are. Um, we are fixing the garage, the garage had a couple of weeks, so we did put a new roof on the garage. Um, and we're putting new siding on the garage and a new garage door because we're storing all of our stuff from our previous house in the garage, but there was a lot of uh. Uh, openings, essentially. But other than that, we weren't changing anything.
Right. All right. Uh, so what is your, your, your decision is formally, are you going to table?
Okay, can I get back to, can I get back to the um Roger's question?
Yes.
Uh, Roger had a question about timeframe on something.
Please.
Let me, let me reframe it, why I'm asking that is. This is not a two-week fix, I don't think.
No, it's not, it's, what, what it is, is we're, we're looking at about fourteen weeks.
No, I mean, to fix, to fix these plans, I don't, I I, even if you come in with a professional with some of these items that you're asking for, it still may be an issue. Um, I mean, you're way under on on building coverage, I mean, there's other options. I just don't want you to spin your wheels, spend a lot of money. On a, I mean, it it's it's up to you, it's balls in your court, I was just getting.
Well, I, I honestly, I'm looking, I'm looking to you guys for a little bit of guidance on this, just because we don't, this isn't something we do every day.
Roger, how, how.
How about this? You agree to table it for, say, two meetings in advance and we, we should probably talk off record.
Two meetings?
I don't think you'd be ready for the next, for the next meeting for this, it's too soon.
The next meeting, excuse me, the next meeting that would actually be available is April, it's the end of April. Uh, March twenty-eighth is completely full, April thirteenth is full, it would be uh March, I'm sorry, April twenty-fifth.
So why don't you ask for a. To firm it to that meeting? And you and I can speak off the record next week to see where, what, where we need to go to get you something.
Um, when. I'm 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 obviously o- open for, um, when you say. Where to go to get, to get something, um.
Well. Oh. We're asking you to table this to April twenty-fifth, what will happen between now and then is Roger will reach out to you. Look to resolve some of his issues with the plans and then get your architect and an engineer or. Surveyor to provide more information to us for that April twenty-fifth meeting, so we can make an informed decision.
All right, I guess that's the best option at hand here.
Yes. So, are you asking him to have the architect or or the planner or lawyer speak for him?
Me quite frankly, I think I'm going to fire the architect, so I'm going to be looking for another one at this point.
Well, I think you should have a look.
But I'm going to talk with Roger, but hopefully we can find a common ground on how to make this happen.
Okay, I think, I think that's your most prudent uh. Uh, avenue.
And there may be an attorney on here tonight that might reach out to you, I don't know, it, there's, 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 you and I should talk.
I mean, I am, I am a hundred percent open to suggestions to anything, my, my end, my end-all, be-all is, I'm I'm. I'm trying to do these improvements for my family to where we can spend this, spend the summers down there, raise my kids on the beach.
We just want to make sure that you, you give yourself your best shot and you're not going to be able to.
Yeah, and and that your project works also, uh, that's the main thing. I- it's got to work for you and for everybody else, so. Every, everybody's got a glad, glad benefit, so let's do that, you, you're, you've agreed to table, table, correct?
Correct.
To the, to the April, the April twenty-sixth meeting?
Correct.
Is that correct?
And one other question, what about reaching out to the neighbors if there's any concerns and they want to get their blessing?
So, um, can you, can I, can I, can I question, can I answer that question?
Well, why don't you answer it when you're, you're doing your application? Uh, at that time. Uh, you, you, you make your decision how you're going to do it, so uh, that's basically with that.
April twenty-fifth or twenty-sixth?
It's the twenty-fifth, let me just double check it, uh, it's the twenty-fifth for sure.
April twenty-fifth.
But I, I, Jay, I'll say all the buzzwords, so if anyone's on the, on the call or on the Zoom tonight for the. Uh, Barag application, eight North Cambridge Avenue, block one nineteen, lot twenty-nine. Uh, and later, the, the testimony we've heard so far, the application is going to be tabled. Um, and continued until April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two, six thirty P M, it will be. At City Hall and in-person meeting only.
Without being Zoom.
The applicant, no, no Zoom, the applicant will be, will not be required to republish or re-notice, this is your formal notice for that. So I know, I see some people on the call, I don't know if they're here for this application or another one, but April twenty-fifth, this will uh resume, six thirty P M, at City Hall.
Okay. Do you copy all that? And you can get in contact with our board administrator and uh you can, you can work everything out. And how, Roger, how are they getting in contact with you?
I just sent Ms. Barack an email.
Okay, so uh, that's, the process is already started. So, all right, so at this point in time, this application, it was drawn, uh, it is, uh, the hearing will cease on this application. And we will move to the next application, uh, Matt and Lynn, thank you for working with us in this, but this is a difficult matter. And we're trying to look at your best interest as well. We don't want to get you in a, in a position where you have no recourse. So uh, where you get, get caught and you're uh, because we're bound by, we're bound by state law to do the things we do. So we have to follow things also. So with that, uh, with that, I thank you very much for being, for working with us. And we're looking forward to seeing, looking forward to seeing you again.
I'm sorry, Jay, then you can contact me, I will um. Give you Roger's number or email, this way you, if, you know, you can contact him however way you need to.
Right.
I gave them my cell number in the email.
Okay.
Okay, so you have all that, so uh, there's, there's. You're not alone, okay, so uh, so that's it, take care, and thank you for being with us to see, to see.
Thank you.
Right. Okay, uh. Next application is that of uh, one oh four South Washington Avenue. Uh. Do we have that group up?
Chris Ballen, as soon as Jim lets me on the video, I will.
Okay. Chris, you're representing?
I represent um Pearlstein, yes, I am.
Yes, you are, and uh, Mr. Chris Hallaway? And you see Chris.
Okay, Holiday Architects.
Yeah, you're Holiday Architects, so you're there, you're also representing. So we'll get the applicant up and then we'll get everybody sworn.
Let Pac ask you, have you on the video?
Uh, Jim, if we can get uh, Mr. Ballen in, um.
Yeah, I can't, I can't even turn his, his audio, his video on, there's no, it's not giving me an option, so there's got to be something on your end, Chris, that's. Not allowing that, it's not giving me even an option to give, to let you have video.
One second. Thanks, Jim.
Saw you earlier.
If I can, yeah, I tried, it's a different laptop, actually, I'm trying a different.
I know we can get Mr. Pearlstein in too, if we can, Jim.
You want to log in again, you guys?
You want to log that, log off, Chris, and try to log back on, because it's not, it's not giving me an option.
I'll kill this one.
Can't wait for these to be back in person.
Uh, we can't either, so that makes, that makes all of us. All right, uh, Mr. Pearlstein, uh, with you and your wife, are you going to, which one of you are going to be sworn or both?
I will.
Okay. Um, okay, we have Mr. Ballen up and we have Mr. Halliday up, so Leo, do this, do the swearing, please?
Sure, uh, Mr. Halliday and Mr. Pearlstein, if you can just state your name and address and or business address for the record, I'll swear that you both in together.
Right, Chris.
Okay, uh, my name is Chris Schustak at Holiday Architects, seven twenty-eight West Ave, Ocean City.
Robert J. Pearlstein, one oh four South Washington Avenue, vendor.
Okay, can, can you please raise your right hand, you swear from the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes, I do.
Chris, can you just spell your, your last name again, I'm sorry?
Sure, it's S H U S T O C K.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And uh.
For the record, I, I've worked with Chris Schustak and Chris Halliday many, many times in Ocean City, Margate.
Right, so they are licensed, they are licensed architects, correct? In New Jersey, okay, thank you, Roger.
Will, will the board accept their credentials without having to go through them?
Well, we'll accept the credentials of Chris's, yes.
Thank you, members of the board, nice to see you, my name is Chris Ballen, and I represent Robin City Pearlstein, who are on with us this evening. For their property at lot nine, block forty-three, one oh four, South Washington Avenue, Beach Block on Washington Avenue. Um, this is a nice application, this is a renovation of a typical nineteen forties, nineteen fifties, uh, two-story. Uh, Cape, kind of Cape, kind of whatever, bungalow-style house on, on South Washington, which has kind of fallen out of uniformity. With the rest of this block, which has really kind of blown up, uh, with a bunch of really nice houses, both new construction and renovations. What the procedure is doing is, um, they had Halliday Architects, uh, design a renovation for them. Primarily, one of primarily to bring the house more into conformity with the block and the other beach blocks in Vettner. To more, more of a shingle-style coastal-style house, while at the same time taking up some valuable room at the, at a third floor that they need for their, for their family. Um, there are a couple of variances associated with that, as you typically find with um, construction that involves renovation rather than new construction. And what we have this evening is a variance for a third floor, it's kind of, I wouldn't even call it a deck, or it's more of a balcony, it's about, it's a six-foot balcony, like a Juliet balcony. Um, that encroaches one foot into the twelve-foot, twelve feet that is required for that setback, it's a one-foot variance at that relatively small third-floor deck. Um, Roger points out a variance for. Um, Roger points out a variance for the, um, I guess vertical wall or eve height, where we're, we're not starting, one section of, of a door is not starting at two feet above the second-floor plate. It's higher than that. And I think what you hear these guys testify to is, that's really to, to capture that gambrel style of this roof, which works, which works best with this house, to get that space that they need. I don't think it adds any additional space to the third floor. It just allows them to achieve the design that they're looking for. Um, and there will be some questions about the parking configuration. There's, there's a variance because we're adding bedrooms. Bedroom count works with the parking count. It just so happens that some of the parking dimensions are, are off, and that's an existing non-conforming condition that we really can't do anything about. It is what it is. We're not adding bedrooms that require additional spaces, but since we are changing the bedroom count, parking comes into play. We have three spaces and that conforms with the ordinance. Um, our coverage is over. That's the existing condition. Again, we are not affecting coverage, but what you will hear is we are reducing coverage in an attempt to help with the drainage. And I think Chris will tell you about some options with fresh drain, possibly park some of that water down into the ground and keep it on our lot rather than have it go to the sides. I don't wanna hold you. There's a couple of long applications earlier. I don't wanna hold you up too long. So I'm gonna have, um, Chris testify with respect to the project that the Pearlstein brought to him, what they came up with and where we're at and what we're doing tonight.
Yeah, I'll keep your, your job setting that up. Um, basically they tasked us with, with using their existing home. They're, they're in a fortunate position where their first floor, uh, finish level is right at floods or right where it needs to be to meet the feet of flood requirements. Um, so they can reconstruct, they can keep their ground floor as is, um, and they'll re, and reconstruct the second floor, um, some reconfiguration space, which gives them, um, gives their family, their grown kids as well as grandkids now, um, more space to use the property. Um, the, the use is existing, conforming, um, and they'll be using it in the same situation. Uh, parking, uh, again, is what it is. There, there's three spots, but they're, obviously the configuration causes issues.
And Chris, just for us to be clear on that, it really, it's really reflected in the dimensions of the spaces. Um, versus the garage space where it's actually conforming at, um, nine by 18, we'd like to see a space in the garage of 10 by 20.
Correct.
And, and it's not. So that, that, to a extent, requires variance. It's existing, but to be on the same side, we're, we're including that variance.
Exactly.
And there's also a question with respect to stacked parking, which is frowned upon, but we can't do anything about it. It's every house on the island. Um, it is what it is. But again, because we're changing bedrooms, that requires relief.
Exactly. That ground floor is constructed and I, I looked into, into adding a spot in any configuration that I can't make happen.
You're going with the existing driveway, right? The, the, the existing driveway staying the way it is?
Exactly.
Okay.
Um, so yeah, it's an exist, uh, so they tasked me with creating a more cohesive design. The home 19, was built probably 1920. Um, the shingle-style gambrel is consistent with that timeframe. There's, there's, I love that about Ventnor. Those old, old homes that kind of stand the test of time. Um, so we can create that in the footprint, existing, uh, situation without, without knocking down and creating a new, uh, a new home, um, using various materials that aren't as aesthetically pleasing. Um, so the, the gamble stop fits in the style, uh, the, uh, of Ventnor as well as it, it works kind of tying this. There are some gambler elements to the existing home that have been pushed and pulled over the years and, and don't really shine anymore. So we're, um, kind of making that, uh, step out to the forefront. Um, the.
The gamble, the gambrel element that you're including to, to carry out this, um, renovation, particularly the third-floor addition, could you show on a plan or point on a plan where that element is, where you're, you're, you're above the two-foot above second-floor plate, where that's extended and, and how that affects the overall design?
Yeah, I believe Roger's talking about the two-foot above plate is if you, I'm just going through the sheets that you have in front of you. I have the same sheets as well. So if we go to the elevations on sheets, A3.01, um, we are, we created the gambrel style. We're, we're, we're meeting the, the roof pitches. Um, we're not maximizing the height because of the gamble gives us, let's say we went to the maximum height allowed, we could gain that square footage in different ways. But with the gamble roof that provides you, your square footage, um, and still meet all the roofs of, uh, by ordinance.
Can you identify where on the roof plan that, that relief is requested?
Uh, Chris.
Maybe Roger can clarify that.
No, I, I don't think that's a variance. Uh, I was looking at the existing with the, the existing elevations and trying to find it on the proposed.
Yeah, our, our side roof, the only evs that are above what's there are all the dormers. Um, and there's, and that square footage is, is by ordinance at dormer. No, so I believe that's allowed.
Right.
I wanted to address it because it was in Roger's report.
Yeah, yeah.
I put it in there as a variance because I, I need to clarify on that. I think you're good.
Okay.
We're gonna delete that as a variance then, Roger?
Yes.
Okay. Um, everyone, you're tracking, delete that.
So Chris, that brings us back to a one-foot encroachment of the third-floor balcony.
Yeah.
And you'll, she'll just tell the board where that is on plan and you've actually highlighted, so to speak, where that portion of that balcony, that's.
Cover sheet of our drawings, I'm showing that balcony. We, we designed it as a balcony, so we're not blocking any views from the neighbors, per se. We are, um, that foot basically gives Cynthia and Robert the opportunity to have two chairs up there and use it for their own personal use.
That's a, that's a cantilever. That's, that's cantilever, correct?
Correct.
That's a cantilever balcony.
It is.
And at that, at that, at that distance, that, that still sits behind the house to, to the side of them on, on the ocean side.
Correct.
But they're still, they still have to look at an angle. That's not, that one foot is not pushing them in front of anybody. Is that right?
No, it is not in my, my opinion.
And, and the, the principal structure meets, well, well meets the front yard setback requirement?
Yes, our, our, uh, third floor meets all the setbacks.
And, um, briefly, if you would, the, um, coverage issue, I mean, we're changing coverage, so a variance potentially be required, even though we are approving it?
Yeah, we are, uh, 86.4 existing, which is excessive, obviously. Uh, there's a reason that number isn't in the ordinance. We're proposing 85.9. Um, just looking over the plan, I think rather easily, we can get it down to 83.8 by removing some, um, that'll never really be noticed, some concrete. Um, and as well, we had the opportunity of, if we remove, uh, next to the garage, we make that impervious or, or pervious, I should say, excuse me. Um, we can do a, a French drain system along both sides of the property and kind of keep all our, our water where it belongs on our, on our site and kind of let that infiltration happen, um, on either side of, of the, of the property. Um, so we'd be amenable to that. Um, so that, so our proposed would be 83.8%. And then maybe we do a French drain system under those grass strips, strip areas on the east and west side of the property.
So with, with the eve height variance being eliminated, it really leaves us with the only new condition is the one foot for the third floor balcony. Is that right?
Correct, yes.
And we talked about the municipal land use act and having to address the positive criteria. You and I discussed this earlier. We, we looked at, obviously, the aesthetic enhancement, uh, criteria. Is that right?
Yeah, correct.
The promotion of general welfare because you're bringing this house more into conformity with some of the newer designs on this block and throughout the beach block areas in Ventnor?
Yes, yes.
And the preservation of my, our open space, I'll say, because you are maintaining this third-floor space well within the criteria of the third-floor components and setbacks in my, in, in Ventnor's ordinance. Is that fair?
Correct, correct, yes.
And with the location of this house being somewhat back on this lot, um, do you think this variances, these variances can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without substantial bearing the intent, the purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance?
Yes, I believe so.
Thank you, Chris. But for members, that's all I have from direct testimony. The Pearlstains are here. If you guys have any questions to them, they own the property for, what's, 35 years, you say?
Oh, 15.
15, 15 years. Um, and you're just looking to make, make improvements to it and make it look nice on Washington Avenue. That's all I got, Jay.
Okay. Uh, all right. Uh, Roger, uh, would you like to give your presentation, uh, on this, uh, application?
Uh, it's pretty brief. I mean, Chris pretty much hit on the points in the report. I just want to point out that the front yard setback to the third-floor deck, I, I think it's more of a variance for the third-floor deck or balcony not being contained within the building envelope. Because the, the house actually, as Chris pointed out, sits further back than what is permitted. So the deck kind of meets setback. You know, it, it is off by one foot, but it, it doesn't meet the definition for the third-floor deck. So I, that's, yeah, Chris's testimony, he provided testimony for either or. So I, I just want to point out that the variance is actually for the outside of the building envelope. And the parking space size for the interior of the garage, where 10 by 20 is required by variance, or by ordinance, and 9.75 by 18.8, oh eight is, uh, is a variance. And stacked parking, even with the stacked parking, the, the ordinance has a, a space scenario, says a criteria for a length of a driveway is being met. The ordinance suggests that a garage and driveway combination of greater than 1.75 vehicles is not permitted by saying that, that criteria counts as 1.75, which by definition you round up. So it's two spaces. And the garage counts as another one. So they are meeting the three spaces, but it's just the size and the configuration. And I could tell you just that every house on that block has stacked parking greater than two. So, uh, they are, the variance is being requested. And I, I will let it go at that.
Is that a total of three, Roger?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, in that regard, uh, okay. Um, are you complete?
I'm done. Thank you.
Uh, now, are you, Roger, are you complete?
I am complete. I just want to get clarification. So you are willing to reduce the lot coverage from 85.9 to 83.8, Chris?
3.8 is the calculation.
Right, 3.8, right.
Can I ask you here about the coverage? Can I interrupt for a minute?
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, is, what are the chances of taking, uh, getting less coverage? I mean, we haven't really talked about or looked at the backyard. Is it all concrete?
No.
What is the backyard?
Well, it's now, it's, it's grass with the astroturf on top of it.
Had to go there.
Well, Roger, without the astroturf, would that reduce the coverage?
Well, astroturf by definition is typically porous. But it does not meet the landscape or vegetative surface requirements. So, you know, if they put natural grass on there, they would meet, that would help with the actual landscape coverage.
Because, yeah, it's still considerably above what the ordinance, uh, requires. You know, it's something that they could improve upon, I believe.
Uh, can we change the astroturf to grass, to natural grass?
Sure. The only problem, there's no sun back there because there's a house behind us is literally.
I know. Uh.
It, it's still counting as porous material. It just, it doesn't count as landscape coverage. That's all.
Do we need a, a landscape coverage? Is, is that meet the requirement?
No, it's less than required, but it's not being changed. It's an existing, not conforming.
Okay. Uh, it's on the, so there's, there's no variance for that, correct?
No variance for that, no.
There's no variance for that. Okay. Um, all right. Are you complete now?
I am complete.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Ballson, uh, are you in agreement with Mr. McLaren's report?
Yes, no problem.
Okay. Uh, from there. Okay. Board members, any other questions of the applicants or discussion that you want to ensue? We'll open up to the public.
Well, yeah, I have a question. Just a curiosity. I'm, I'm guessing that everything that you're gonna build is already built. And what triggered all these variances at this late stage in the game?
The Julia. You want me to jump in, Chris?
Yeah, the only, the only variance that's new, Peter, is the one foot for the third-floor deck, which can be.
The balcony. So the balcony triggered the variant.
Right. Everything else we had to ask for has existed.
It, it, it appeared to me when I, when I toured the site that the balcony is already built. It's shown on the pictures. So that, but these were not issues prior to that one little.
The, I don't wanna speak for Eric Myers. He's the builder on the job, but I did speak with him about the framing plan, obviously. Um, and he's aware if we don't get this variance, he has to chop a foot off the balcony and, and there was.
Also aware that that balcony should not have been, should not have been there today.
The way it's.
Yeah, it was just a curiosity on my point because, you know, I, I, when I looked at, I said, well, then it's already there.
I, I agree, and I said the same, okay.
Okay.
Tony, Eric's not on, on the call tonight.
Parents are always there too, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. Parking and coverage were all there, but we agreed to ask for them pending, you know, pending the house being built.
Okay. Um, uh, board members, any further questions? Uh, at this time, we're not, we're not gonna go further. Jim, could you open up to the public, please?
Everybody from the public wishes to speak a question on this application. Please make yourself known within Zoom by raising your hand or in the chat feature and you'll be recognized. Once recognized, let me turn your camera on, unmute yourself and question the, the board and the applicant. There's nobody in the, um, audience, but I wanted to make sure I said it anyway.
Okay. So there's, there's no, nobody in the audience. There's no response. So the public portion is now closed due to, due to lack of anybody being able to respond. Okay. Uh, uh, Chris, do you have anything further you want to add at this point, Ballson?
No, sir. Thank you, though.
Okay. Uh, at that point, uh, board members, this is your last opportunity to ask questions of the applicant or our professionals. It's not, uh, Leo, could you prepare a, uh, a resolution, please? Or not a resolution, but, uh, a finding on this?
Motion, yeah.
Yes.
I, I assume just existing landscaping will stay the same, with the exception that they're gonna reduce coverage.
Do we have to do a, do we have to do a street tree waiver on this? Do we have to do a street tree? It's beach block. Are we doing?
It's on the beach block, so.
Right. So we should include a street tree waiver in that.
Okay, that, that makes.
Yeah, that usually we do that.
Okay. All right. So the, so the motion and the second someone has to make is for sea variance relief. The variances are as far as the third-floor deck is outside the building envelope, um, where it's required to be inside the bu, building envelope. That's the, I guess, the new variance. And then the other two relate to the, uh, the parking configuration and size. The garage parking space is 9.75 feet by 18.08 feet, where 10 by 20 is required. So it's just a dimension there. And then as far as the configuration, they have, uh, stacked parking to, they have two driveway stacked with, uh, one garage where I think it's one garage and one driveway is permitted. So they have an additional car stacked. And, uh, the condition, they'll, they'll reduce the landscaping coverage or the lot coverage to 83.8%, which is a slight reduction from where it is now. And we'll waive the, uh, the, the street tree requirement being on a beach block. And then any other conditions in Mr. McLaren's report and any other representations made by the applicant will be the conditions.
May I have a motion in a second, please?
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
Okay. Well, state your reasons. We'll have a roll call vote.
Mr. Avangrath?
Uh, I, I think that the, the existing parking situation, it's there. I mean, that's not changing. Um, I appreciate the effort to reduce the coverage on the site, uh, down to the 83.8%. And the, the third-floor deck, I, I really want to revisit that ordinance. I don't, I don't see, we see a lot of these coming before us, getting relief. I'm, I'm wondering why we need the relief because they don't seem to be egregious each time they're coming in. Maybe it's the way they're designing them. But I don't have an issue with this deck. Obviously, the neighbors don't. I think it's a nice feature off of that, that space upstairs. And I vote yes on the application. I don't see it as a detriment to the neighborhood nor any impairment to our zone plan or zoning ordinance.
Jay Cook?
Uh, I want to vote yes in this application. They're basically attempting to, uh, meet our zone plan, uh, also be within our, our master plan. Uh, they met light and air. They haven't encroached upon, uh, uh, the view of others, uh, others on either side of the, of their property. Uh, you can look down the street and you can see through the houses or it's equivalent to what's there. So, uh, the developmental pattern is such that this house does conform, uh, there. The third-floor deck, um, is, uh, sits well back from the front setback line. So the one foot that is over is not a variance that they're seeking, but it's inconsequential. So the one foot that is over is not a variance that they're seeking, but it's inconsequential. And the fact that the, that the deck sticks out from beyond the face of the house rather than be inside the, behind the principal wall. Is inconsequential again with the, with the, where, where the house sits in relationship to other properties. So our ordinance, in fact, is, is being, uh, the spirit of our ordinance is being met. So with that, uh, I am voting in favor.
Romans Abbey Hatch?
I also vote yes. Uh, I think the variances are really de minimis and, uh. Uh, I live at the other end of Washington. I think this is a great addition to the street. Uh, and I also agree with what said, the, uh. Third floor roof, though it does project out of the building, really looks great on the building. So a very supportive yes.
Lorraine Salata.
I'll vote yes for this application. Um, there's really nothing here that I find egregious, egregious. Uh, it's always nice to have a home, uh, modernized, redeveloped. And, uh, it fits in with the scheme of the neighborhood. The deck for me isn't on issue. So again, I vote no. Yes, I'd be.
Dan Smith the third.
I also go and vote in favor of the application. I don't see anything, uh. Out of line here with, uh, a lot of tweaking and a lot of, uh, minor, uh. Uh, adjustments that they're asking for. Uh, I like the design of the house. I think it fits in with the neighborhood really well. Uh, you know, they're expanding this for their family and, um. Uh, doing it in a way that, uh, they're not imposing on anyone else. They do have the parking issue, but I, apparently that's been working out anyway. So. I don't really see any problem here at all. So I'm in favor.
Mike Wiesen?
I, I agree with, uh, all the comments that my fellow board members have stated. Uh, I'm looking on Google at the old house. I'm looking at the plans of the new house and it's, it's absolutely beautiful. Uh, I vote in favor. Good luck.
Peter Taco.
Um, I'm also going to be voting in favor of it, uh. Although I do understand the, the value of that third floor deck being inset, um, I think. In most instances, it, it, it speaks to a much larger deck. This is a small, you know, really inconsequential. Feature on the front of the house. Uh, I think it will add an aesthetic value. And as far as the parking goes, it's what has been there. It's worked. There's no reason why it shouldn't continue to work. I'll vote in favor.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Carmella, that concludes everything, correct?
Correct.
Okay, Mr. Pearlstein, Mrs. Pearlstein, congratulations.
Thank you.
And a girl. Anyway, good luck with your project, uh, and, uh, and again, thank you for staying. Thank you for being a stakeholder. Uh, we love it.
Thank you all.
Okay, Chris, thank you, and Chris, thank you.
Hey, Chris.
Good night.
All right. Okay, um. Mr. Perlstein, the meeting is over at this point in time. So, uh.
I think he's frozen.
He's frozen, he's frozen?
Yep.
Okay. All right. We have to unfreeze him. All right, well, he's unfrozen. Okay, well, we had a, an interesting night this evening. So, uh, our things are cut out and, uh, as you can see, it's, is when people aren't prepared totally for everything. Uh, it becomes a problem or they, they can't explain their projects. So, uh. Uh, but, uh, I have to say that Roger's been very good at working with everybody to try and, uh, and get them to, uh. Uh, trying to help them out as best we can. So, uh, that is the case. So any other comments this evening for anyone?
I, I don't think the people with Eaton with Cambridge realized how difficult it was going to be. I tried to tell them for about two months and they, they. They weren't listening, but. I think they realize now.
I think many times when, like, the two fellows that we had tonight, that they're builders. They know what they want to build. They just don't know the intricacies of what the ordinance is to me. You know, they, they kind of get the general picture, but they can't even define it the way we need it defined. And but yet they think they know it and to some extent they know it. But not enough to really plead their case or to tweak it in such a way that we can really give them any approvals. You know, I, I don't know how you work around that. And Roger, I do believe you when you say you, you tried to. Tell them that they weren't hearing, even tonight, they weren't hearing us, you know?
Listening now. He, he. He's much older and that, and he's not from the area. So I, he kind of. Yeah, I was telling him, saying you need a height variant, a D variant for the height and he's, ah, well, that's what we need then.
Old, old doesn't even usually attend the meetings. He used to have Walter Old, that's the guy you're talking about, Roger?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Usually has someone else from his office come because he, he does some work in Brigantine here and there. And the plans are difficult to follow. Um, you know, it's just a shame that, that. You know, we, we've got a young family that wants a second home here. They want to improve it.
And they had poor representation there, trying to do it themselves and, and.
See what they're doing. I, it, it was a mechanism to elevate these homes internally. That was encouraged a few years back.
Right.
It's tough on an hour lot. I, I see what he's trying to get to and it sounds like a lot of relief. But I think we might be able to get to something with, with working with them.
Right.
To help them do what they want to do.
To the parking, which to me is the, the bigger problem.
But it exists. That's the way it is. That's the driveway that they have.
But it's the driveway, but there's the, the car, there's room in the back of the lot.
Exactly.
Driveway and park all the cars right across. They can put four cars in there with no trouble.
Right.
They really can't get back there, Jay. It's only six and a half feet wide.
Honestly, we, we shouldn't be talking about it, honestly.
No, we shouldn't. Yeah, okay. All right.
I think we set him up on that. I agree.
We said, we're done.
I have something to say.
Okay, please.
All right, hold on. Uh, here I am, looking all crazy. All right, so I just want to tell you all that, um, tonight is going to be my last night. Doing the meetings due to some health issues. I'm still going to be doing all the background work. But thanks to Commissioner Van Graaff and the rest of the administration, I'm going to be working from home for a little bit. And thanks to Jim Pakenowski, he's going to be doing the meetings and taking over just the minutes for me. Um, just till I get a little bit better. And, um, I love you all. I think you're all great and I miss you, but I'm going to send you each. Um, I'm going to send in an email my cell phone number. So if you have any, any reasons, contact me, please. Don't feel bad. Call me at home. I'm going to have all my things here and, um. Uh, hopefully we'll get it all together. It might be a little difficult in the next couple of weeks, just till we get a groove going. But hopefully it'll all work out.
Carmella, it will all work out.
I know, it will, but.
Well, your health comes first.
So.
I'll stay out of now and I'll miss you all on the meetings, but I'll be thinking of you.
You can zoom in anytime you want.
We won't be able, I won't be able to zoom in, but I'm still, like I said, I'm going to be doing all the paperwork. I'll be doing everything. Your packets, if anything's lost or anything in the shuffle, please call me, email me. I'll make sure I get it out to you. Um, everyone in my office is going to be working great with me. Uh, Michelle's going to be delivering all my packets and, and back and forth. So, um, everything will, you know, hopefully work out perfectly, you know, um. Maybe just a little bumps and bruises in the next couple of weeks, but hopefully it'll all just, you know, work out perfectly.
Okay, Carmella, from the planning board to you, we support you.
I know you do, and that's why I just wanted you to hear it from me before it spreads through them.
Thank you for the. Thank you for the personal message.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Yeah, absolutely. Take care.
And anything you need, let us know.
I sure will. Thank you.
Yeah, reach out to us if you need something.
All right, and like I said, I'm going to send an email. Um, I'll send my cell phone number. You can call me anytime, honestly. Except every third Monday. Can't call me that day. Other than that, call me any day. And I will get back to you and I'll make sure that, you know, you have everything that you need. And thank you, Jim, for helping me out. It means a world to me.
Oh, anytime. Glad to help.
Thanks, Jim.
Right.
Take care, Carmella.
Talk to yous all soon.
Yes. Hey, I had one, one quick thing I needed.
Please.
Can you hear me?
Uh, yes.
Go ahead.
I don't know if I wanted to follow that, but, um, I didn't know if, uh. Roger, do you, do you want, should we bring the, the board up to speed real quick on that South Vic, one oh eight South Victoria or can that wait or should we?
I, I think we, we should mention it under old business.
Well, we're, we're in old business now.
Okay, so I, so, uh, Jimmy reached out to me yesterday, I believe. We, we approved. About ten years ago, I think it was two thousand eleven, one oh eight South Victoria Avenue is the address. I believe it's a vacant property. Um, Jimmy seemed to mention there's been some issues with the property also. But we approved, uh, like a four unit residential development back in two thousand eleven. It was a site plan, a use variance, several bulk variances. Um, I, we do have a copy of the decision and resolution. Um, someone is interested, uh, apparently in, you know, and purchasing the property or proceeding with the development. Um, and, and Sandy, uh. Whatever plans were associated with the decision and resolution were apparently lost. Um, they do have duplicates, so, so they say, and they have provided duplicates. Um, obviously that we don't, there's no, there's no copies that, that, that the board signed off on. It was the zoning board, I believe, at the time. It was before we went to a combined board. Um, and there's no architectural plans that the board signed off on or no site plan. Um, and the question is, it appears to still be a valid approval. Um, and, and in talking to Roger a little bit about it yesterday, the thought process was. You know, have them submit copies like they have and we'll have to, someone will have to go through and kind of do a compliance check. Um, um, and, and, you know, make sure that they're not adding stuff that we didn't approve or they are the plans. That were actually approved by the board, um, and presumably that project could proceed.
You have the resolution.
We have the resolution.
And is the resolution clear enough that, uh, you can get into some of those things?
I, I probably, I, 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 that, that's, I guess that's to be, who would be determined?
Who was the architect?
CB or something, architects?
Yeah, I don't think she's in the area.
I've seen those plans. I've seen them on the street, uh, uh, from my realtors.
Carmella?
Yes.
You remember where my boxes of, um, of all my stuff, because I was the secretary of the zoning board at that time. And I would have had a whole packet on that application that would have been transferred over to Patty. When, um, when it was combined. So it should be that entire application with everything should be in a box somewhere.
I do, well, I know where we keep all of our planning board stuff in the basement. Um, Jimmy can show you exactly where that box is. Hopefully it was labeled correctly. And we should have one oh eight South Victoria on there. Today was my last day at the office. But hopefully I can sneak back in time to time, but if not, Jimmy can go down and. They can, or someone will go down and look through the boxes for me, but I know exactly where they are. We have a room. Um, in that little room, there's the room and then there's that little room and all our planning boards in there.
The only issue I saw was that they had the mechanical room at grade, so they would have to elevate that.
Did, did I understand you to say this was a four unit building that I?
Yeah.
Four units.
Four units.
Doctor Pluck is right.
Yeah, yeah.
The question, the question, the question becomes is. Okay, one of the questions becomes is, we've had additional FEMA advancements. Because of that, does that supersede some of the approvals because of the changes in governmental ordinances?
It does.
So it's going to have to do a FEMA review based on the, the existing plan. Uh, and some things, elevations and so on may change.
How could that approval be good eleven years later?
Yeah, I mean, have they updated it? Have they come in for, uh, should they keep it a, a, a valid?
Doesn't a sexual ordinance, if variances were granted, don't they expire?
Two years, I thought.
Is that in all the approvals?
Well, well, you usually come in for an update.
Well, there's two things. There, there's a site plan approval, which is valid, a final site plan of approvals. Valid for two years and then you can get three one year extensions. Now, there's been all kinds of permanent extension acts. That would need an analysis. Um, whether, whether that's on the applicant approved us, it's still valid or for us to do that work for them. Uh, you know, I, to me, to me, it should be on the person who wants to maintain the approval. Yeah, I, I would agree with that.
Definitely, definitely on them.
But a site plan, a site plan doesn't expire. The, the two years plus the three extensions. Is you're protected from a zoning change. Now, if the zoning hasn't changed. Since two thousand eleven, then they might still be okay in that regard. And I, I'm not sure it has. I think it's that R nine overlays and, and I haven't fully analyzed this. I just got a call from Jimmy yesterday. Um, so, so the, the notion that a site plan after a certain amount of time just expires and goes away is sort of a misconception. What it does is protects you. If, if you, if we approved the site plan today and then a year from now. We went and said, whatever use we approved, the restaurant, for instance, is no longer permitted in such and such zone. Then they're protected until that, whatever the statutory time limit is. Now, there is another section. It's a little bit more confusing. It's not in our section one oh two. It does seem to talk about variances expiring. I don't. It's anyone's guess, does that mean a variance, a standalone variance for like what we approved tonight on Cambridge Avenue for a deck? That that means you have to get the thing done in one year or two years, whatever it says. Or does that mean, you know, any variance that even if it's approved in connection with the site plan? Which has, you know, certain statutory protections associated with it.
Was intended for like the, like the deck.
I would, I would agree.
Right. I, I, I was under the understanding that any variance that we granted, what had a two year, uh, lifetime. If it wasn't, if it wasn't exercised.
I think if it's tied to a site plan, I think it's tied to that to- timeline.
That, that's how, I would, it does, it's not exactly clear, but I would agree with, with, with that. If it's tied to a site plan, then, you know, you, you go by what the site plan ordinance says.
Right. So.
How do you tie that into the, what the, the Sunbank property on Surrey Avenue? We, we saw that twice in the last three years.
Right, that was, that was about four years, about four years, uh, out of approvals.
I, I've been here since seventeen and I saw it twice. I saw it the first time and then the second time around before it got built.
Right, yeah. I, I think, and I, and I could be wrong. I thought that.
They, they didn't really change anything.
They forgot to file the subdivision.
Exactly. I think that was the issue. There they had a subdivision. You have a, a, a certain amount of time by law, a hundred ninety days. If you don't perfect it, you're out of luck pretty much.
Okay.
Um.
Yeah, so it wasn't really.
So, I mean, I, I just wanted to bring it to the board's attention. It's, you know, I don't, I don't know.
But I'm familiar with the project. It seems like a good project for that location.
Well, why don't we just get the, if they're going to do something with it, have them, have them come to us and start asking the questions. And then we'll, we'll have them, have to give the answers. That's all.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Did they want to build as they proposed or are they going to change it to two? Because that was a four unit, uh, project they were putting on that with a rooftop.
Um, right.
Arden.
Flat roof, yep.
Mm-hmm.
And it was a really nice plan, one is very small piece of land. But there was rumors that they were going to split it to two, side by side instead of on top of each other.
Well, until that happens, we don't, it, it, nothing's changed.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess my question was. As is, if they want to proceed, yes, I think it'll be, it needs some sort of FEMA review certainly. Um, but if it meets that. And they have a valid site plan, uh, you know, that, that, that. I, I guess, I guess they need to come to us and, and, and tell us exactly what they want to. and they have a valid site plan, I, you know, that, 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 I, I guess, I guess they need to come to us and, and, and tell us exactly what they want to do.
I agree with that.
Asking oral, asking Jimmy orally.
Right.
Which is what, which is what they've done, I think so.
Right, so I think we need to do two things, is one, see if we can find the plan, and then just instruct them, if they're, they have questions, they can, we could do a workshop with it, for that matter, uh, to go over the whole thing, once, that, once we have what we have. I don't know, Lance, do you think that's a good idea?
That might make sense.
Probably a good idea.
Yeah.
So, uh, so we could try that, and then let's ferret out what we have, and then we can, we, we can go from there.
I like that idea.
If there's any legal opinions or someone that had to be, we'll generate them and everybody agrees or doesn't agree, and that's it.
Okay.
Uh, and, yeah, oh, because we'll talk this thing to death.
Yeah.
And, uh, we have no facts, so if we, if that's, we'll, we'll proceed that way, if everyone is, is, is agree, in agreement with that, and, uh, we'll go forward.
I, I may have missed it, are we also gonna check whether the, the ordinance changes that the state required and that we made based on Sandy? Um, it seems to me that we should also check to make sure that that is all consistent. You know, making sure that, uh, those are statewide requirements, right? When they made, uh, that, would they required changes to our ordinance, it wasn't just something we volunteered, but we followed through on what the state wanted.
With the flood damage prevention?
Yeah.
Yes, uh, it, it is an elevated structure, but again, I, I, I just saw the plans, there's a mechanical room at grade, which, you know, wouldn't get past Jimmy, uh, Jimmy Agnesino and Dino, so that would be, have to be elevated, but other than that, I believe the first floor exceeds what is required.
Okay, but we should just check to make sure.
Right. Again, we just wanted to bring it to your attention that this may be coming back in some shape or form.
Okay. I, well, that, that would be good, uh, we have enough, I think we've talked about it enough tonight, we know where we're going, so, uh, we'll, we'll, the, the rest of the plans, and then they're gonna have to contact us if they want to proceed, uh, to go ahead, and then we'll, we'll make the necessary, we'll make the necessary adjustments and decisions.
Very good.
And, uh, you know, otherwise, we're, we're just, uh, something has to be, they have to trigger something for, for us to, to make, to take action, so that, that will wait for them. Okay, is there anything else for this evening?
No, I just wanna, uh, I have two things to, to say, one, thanks the board for that moment of silence for Ukraine, I, my wife and I appreciate what you did. Secondly, on that sheet that I handed out on variances, I found a mistake. So if you have a chance, I didn't have enough fingers and toes to calculate properly, but on page three, under north, north beach, the, uh, block twelve, lot four and five, I put down fifty two, it should really be forty five variances, there's a lot there.
Oh, geez.
I can't believe you messed that up, Roman.
Yeah.
I didn't think this.
Check, check. Uh. I, I, quick question for the board, I just did this for twenty twenty one, I did look and, uh, made a calculation on all the neighborhoods that I picked out, and I went back to two thousand nineteen, would the board like to see a total for all the, you know, for three years?
That would help us, Roger, I mean, uh, uh, Roman.
Give you an example, um, St. Leonard's, there were four applications in two thousand twenty one, there were twenty application, uh, six applications in two thousand twenty, and there were five applications in two thousand nineteen. If, that might help the board see the perspective of what has changed, I'd gladly do that for the next meeting.
Right, well, we'll also see the hotspots in the city too. You know, where, where things are, or a lot of variances are occurring and what they are, we'll see that, so, uh, that'll help us, Roger, or, uh, Roman, I keep, I keep confusing names. All right, sorry, Rog, all right, uh, anything else, Roman? Roman, anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Okay, thank you for that, Roman, thank you very much. Okay, board members, does anyone have anything else for this evening, or are we ready for adjournment?
I think we're ready.
Okay. Uh. They have a motion and a second for adjournment, please.
I'll make the motion.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye, aye.
We are adjourned.
Good night, everybody.
Night, everybody.
Hey, Carmella.
Be in touch.
Take care, Carmella.
Thank you.